Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. There we go. The Durham Public Schools Board of Education Monthly Meeting is now in session. At this time, we wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone who is joining us this evening. The purpose of this meeting is to inform our parents, staff, and constituents about the work aligned with our mission to embrace, educate, and empower every student to serve, to innovate, and to lead. The interpreters for tonight are Martha Romo-Iguirles and Marty Ramirez. Thank you all for taking the time to join us. The first item on our agenda is a moment of silence. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is celebrations. Ms. Sutter.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Mabinga. It is my pleasure to come to you from my undisclosed location thanks to a minor incident of a upper respiratory infection. And I hate to miss out on celebrations in person. We are about to present to you some outstanding students, teachers, and employees, including a few employees that are close to my own heart tonight. To present those celebrations in person, I turn it over to my colleague, our Director of Marketing and Strategic Communications, Sheena Johnson-Cooper.
My pleasure to introduce the students and staff who are the purpose behind the work that we do in Durham Public Schools. Our first celebration this evening is our Student of the Month. Tonight, we recognize and congratulate Jessica Bortieri, a senior at the Durham Performance Learning Center. I'd like to welcome Principal Keisha Futrell to the podium to share a few remarks about Jessica.
Good evening, school board and guests. It is my pleasure to stand before you tonight and speak about a wonderful young lady named Jessica Bortieri. And to do that, I want to use her own words. My biggest accomplishments so far is having the opportunity to finish school early. With the struggles I have experienced in school in previous years, my confidence increased. I became determined, worked hard, and surprised myself in whom I have become in this past school year. At POC, we give students an opportunity to rise from the ashes of their past and become the bigger, brighter versions of themselves, the best version of themselves. Jessica has surpassed her own expectations, and she is truly rising as a phoenix. It is my pleasure to introduce our Student of the Month, Jessica Bortieri.
Congratulations, Jessica. We are so very proud of you and your accomplishments. And to acknowledge that this evening, we have a few special gifts for you. Tonight, we present you with a spark pen because you represent the best in DPS. And we want you to wear this proudly throughout your school, throughout the community, to let everyone know that you have earned this recognition. And we also have a special certificate for you tonight, acknowledging that as well. All right, we have another very big surprise for you. Our friends at Triangle eCycling want to make sure that you are prepared for whatever your next steps are in life. And so they have presented you with a laptop this evening. So welcome. And we're still not done. Last but certainly not least, the Raven Family Foundation has presented you with a $500 scholarship to further your education. Congratulations, Jessica. Continue to make yourself proud, your family proud, and all of Durham Public Schools proud. Please walk our red carpet. Our board and administration want to celebrate you tonight. Mr. Cunningham, right here. Yes. We are excited to share more student celebrations this evening, and we are recognizing two DPS elementary students who are state winners and will be published in the North Carolina Reading Association's 2023 Young Authors Anthology. Taylor Torrance is a kindergartner at Spring Valley Elementary School where Principal Wendellin Wilson leads that school community, and a fifth grader Natalie Wallace, who attends Creekside Elementary School, led by DPS 2021 Principal of the Year, Dr. Tori Kramer. Taylor is the author of The Six Princesses, and Natalie authored a book entitled A Pile of Books. Young ladies, scholars, please come forward with your families. As you continue to shine throughout your DPS career, we are so very proud of you. And we present you with spark pens as well to commemorate this occasion, and we want you to wear it proudly. Thank you so much for being amazing young students. We'd also like to do, offer a special thanks to the classroom teachers who are supporting those young authors, Jennifer Neal and Anne Capello. Thank you so much. As we transition to our staff recognitions, I'd like to ask my colleagues in the Office of Public Affairs to come forward. I know that Mr. Sutter certainly wishes he could be here in person as we make this very special announcement, and we know that he is listening in.
I'm not feeling left out at all, Ms. Cooper.
I hear you, too. The DPS Office of Public Affairs has earned 15 awards through the North Carolina School Public Relations Association's Blue Ribbon Awards. While that is a huge accomplishment, we have one even better. Our very own Digital Communications Specialist, Tony Cunningham, was presented with a Best of the Best recognition for his photo entitled Heartfelt Haircut. I'm not sure if we have that image available this evening, but if you have not seen it, we will certainly share it with you. It is truly moving and received rave reviews from the judges. Among the gold, silver, and bronze honors were the Spark Insider publication, a campaign slogan, the district's DPS Notables feature series, and several photos and video productions produced for our schools and the district. The Blue Ribbon Event recognizes excellence in strategic communication, writing, digital and electronic media, marketing, special events, photography, and publications. We are honored to serve the families and staff of DPS through our work. Thank you so much, and thank you, team. And finally, I would like to ask Ms. Michelle Hayes, Executive Director of Talent and Acquisition and Employee Recognition, to come to the podium to announce our Teacher and Employee of the Month. Thank you all. Sometimes it's hard for us to stop the work, but we appreciate your recognition. Thank you. And now, Michelle Hayes.
Good evening, good evening. Good evening, Chairman Umstead, members of the board, Dr. Mabinga, and cabinet members. I am pleased to bring two recognitions to you tonight. Our Teacher of the Month, sponsored by North Carolina Central University's tennis team, the Tonsa Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, and DCL Consulting LLC, and the Vail Cares Foundation, and our Employee of the Month, sponsored by the Office of Human Resources. Both recognitions will be brought to you monthly, and we congratulate these high performers. Our February Employee of the Month is Andrea Resto, is the school treasurer at Spring Valley Elementary School. Andrea Resto is a builder of community. She is a collaborator, an organizer, a champion for students while being fiscally responsible for the students, for the school's funds. Ms. Resto spreads kindness throughout the building as she does the afternoon announcements, telling everyone to keep smiling and bringing joy to everyone you meet. You never know how much being kind can change someone's day. I'm so grateful you showed up today. As always, be brave, be creative, be thankful, be happy, and be you. Congratulations to Andrea Resto for being named Durham Public Schools' February Employee of the Month. She will receive a spark pen and a plaque. Our February Teacher of the Month is Esfede Herrera Rodriguez, first grade teacher at Glenn Elementary School. While this is Ms. Herrera Rodriguez's first year at Glenn and only her second year teaching, you would never know that when you walk into her room. She has transformed her space into a bright, peaceful, child-centered place that models best practices for all learning every day. When we asked Ms. Herrera why she wanted to become a teacher, she said, "I am passionate about helping students find their strengths, voice, and passions. I want to act as a support systems for families who are not originally from the U.S. and help them with navigating a new school system, language, and culture. As a Mexican teacher, I want to help students realize they can be whomever they want, no matter where they are from or what they look like." We could not say it better than Ms. Herrera said it herself. She has done a masterful job celebrating and meaningfully making her heritage and culture an important part of our school community. During our Hispanic Heritage Celebration, Ms. Herrera and her brother performed a traditional Mexican dance to share an important part of their culture with our students. She became an instant celebrity with kids wanting to take their picture with her immediately. In the classroom is wherever is where her skill and dedication really shines. Being bilingual in Spanish and English allows her the ability to communicate fluently and support her students in both their native language and new language. She has made an extensive effort to communicate with her families and to advocate for them by helping them to interpret and translate for them at Glenn. Where Ms. Herrera really shines, though, is her ability to support students' learning. During the most recent M-class window, all of her students met or exceeded growth, and 25% of her class jumped one or more levels. Recently, she was reading a book with a student who has been in the United States for less than a year. As the students worked through sentences like Pam has a cat with deliberate determination, at the end, she turned to her teacher and said, "Ms. Herrera, I can read that." That one sentence may encapsulate the best in teaching. That student didn't even realize how much she was learning every day, but she knew she loved school and she adored Ms. Herrera. In a time when we frequently hear about teacher shortages and challenges in the classroom, Ms. Herrera Rodriguez represents the promise and the future of teaching. Congratulations, Esfede Herrera Rodriguez, excuse me, for being named Durham Public Schools' February Teacher of the Month. She will also get a spark pen and a presentation from Coach Lawson.
Good evening, everyone. I had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Herrera Rodriguez last Friday when the men's tennis team from North Carolina Central University, we gave a surprise visit to her in recognition of this great honor. And we are delighted to be able to celebrate, to recognize her being truly a transformational leader and role model in the Durham Public School system. So in addition to all of the surprises that we gave to her on last Friday, on behalf of DCL Consulting, we would also like to give her a check for $100 just for her to go to dinner or to celebrate again in recognition of her excellence. So, and while we give recognition to the Teachers of the Month, I would be remiss and have been remiss in that also acknowledging and giving thanks to the principals because if they were not giving the nominations of these wonderful teachers, then we would sometimes be a little clueless. So Principal Hunt is here. I had an opportunity to speak with him a couple of times. So thank you, Principal Hunt. And again, congratulations to Ms. Herrera Rodriguez.
This concludes our celebrations for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper, Mr. Sutter, and the team. Also, just want to add up another celebration. Next week is the Crown Act Week for DPS, and we have a series of celebrations that are happening. And so we'll be celebrating our students and our crowns. And the board passed a resolution, I believe it was at our last meeting. But there'll be an event on February 27th about beauty standards and stereotypes. March the 2nd, Off to the Top: Kings and Their Crowns, and then other Spirit Week celebrations all throughout the week. I think they're pulling up a flyer now. So check it out on Facebook or on Twitter, Instagram. I think the information is posted. And I'm excited that we work in the district that we're going to be celebrating crowns all next week. All right. All right, the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's update. Before I pass it to you, Dr. Mabinga, I also want to make a note that Board Member Louis is absent this evening. She is taking a medical absence today, and so we just want to recognize that absence. But sends her love and appreciation to everyone here. Dr. Mabinga.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good evening. I want to spend some time this evening talking about the arts in Durham Public Schools and our incredible student artists. This is one of the clear difference between Durham Public Schools and our competitors. No one else in Durham County can match us when it comes to the depth and creativity and resources that we have committed to the arts. You have only to look at Tuesday night performance by our students at the Durham Performing Arts Center for the evening to shine. We had the highest attendance ever. We featured not only our music and dance programs, but also our theater arts and visual arts programs. It was a tremendous success. I'm grateful to Jeremy Tucker, our Director of Art Education, and to all our teachers and staff and guest instructors who supported our students through it. I'm also grateful to the Durham Public School Foundation for co-hosting the event. Our arts program are valuable for their own sake, but also in providing an opportunity for our students to use their voices to affect change in our community. This month, Gun violence in Durham has once more touched our school communities with one of our students losing his life away from campus. The pain and grief of our student is evident, and it came across in the performance of the play State of Urgency at Hillside High School this month with students across Durham Public Schools as well as the broader community. When Sheriff Burke and I collaborated on bringing Mr. Wendell Tab play back this month, we did not know how close to home the play would feel. State of Urgency was followed by a talkback panel comprising DPS leaders and community members, including Sheriff Burke, Duke physicians, and leaders of agencies and community organizations. Dr. Laverne Maddick-Perry and Tumika World Sutterfield answered questions with assurances that our students and staff mental health continue to be a priority. State of Urgency at Hillside Theater student captured the attention of thousands. I want to thank Principal William Logan, Drama Teacher Tiffany Augustin, Mr. Tab, Mr. Tucker, and everyone else who gave our students this platform. Finally, I want to talk about teachers' pay. Finally, I want to talk about teachers' pay and the state's responsibility for it. Last week, the Professional Educator Preparation and Standard Commission sent recommendations to the state board about starting a pilot program that will change how teachers are licensed and paid. The plan which the commission approved on a 9 to 7 vote in November creates different levels of licensure and measures of effectiveness that would affect teachers' pay. It's a complicated proposal. It's sitting with the board, the state board now, but all this ultimately will have to be approved by the state legislature. And I want you to know that I do not support it, not this way, not at this time. Teacher compensation in the state of North Carolina is not sufficient, to put it mildly. The Public School Forum of North Carolina notes that we are 38th in the nation for teachers' pay. The starting base salary is below the state minimum living wage. The Public School Forum is calling on the legislatures to raise teacher salaries by 24.5%. If the state paid competitive wages to our teachers, then our counties will not be in such desperate arms race to do each other with local supplements. If the state paid competitive wages to our teachers, then it will be easier to attract people to the profession. Then perhaps we can look at licensure additions and further opportunities for additional compensation for our teachers. I do not support the PFC proposal until we have taken those first step. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Mabinga. So many things that we could touch on on that report, but I appreciate you saying abreast of what's happening around the state and also highlighting so many of the accomplishments of our students and staff. The next item on our agenda is Agenda Review and Approval.
Madam Chair, I'd like to add to the agenda after the District 3 vacancy interview question, the Capital Project Amendment.
Second, the agenda as amended.
It's been moved by Ms. Rogers and seconded by Ms. Byer. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please use the same sign. Passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the Board of Education Monthly Meeting Minutes for January, the Board of Education Monthly Meeting Minutes for January 26, 2023.
Move approval of the minutes as presented.
Second.
The move by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Chavez. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, please use the same sign. Passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is General Public Comment. They give us some instructions and then we'll get started. A quick review of the rules. First, please state your name, and if you're speaking for an organization, please state your name and the name of the organization. Second, speakers are asked to present their comments in a specified time. It'll be three minutes this evening. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute left to start winding up your remarks. When the red light comes on, it will beep, which indicates your time is up. Complaints about named staff, students, or parents should not be voiced in open session. However, we are very interested in hearing your concerns with regard to the public education, safety of students, or to the operations of the school system. Finally, the board members will listen carefully and consider the comments, but we do not engage in a discussion with speakers. Our first speaker is Minister Paul Scott, who will be followed by Kim Singletary.
Good evening, Superintendent Mabinga, Chair Umstead, School Board, and all present. Two years ago, the Durham City Council and the Durham School Board passed a resolution against House Bill 324, which is also known as the Anti-Critical Race Theory Bill. Today, February 23rd, 2023, a new bill where the same bill has been reintroduced under House Bill 187. And they're again attacking what they term as, quote, "critical race theory," unquote. What's ironic about the name of the House Bill 187 is, I'm as a hip-hop connoisseur. In gangster rap terms, 187 is the California penal code for murder. And that's appropriate with this bill because they're trying to kill the culture of black children. So I stand before you this evening hoping that Durham will continue to be the vanguard and standing against this attack on education. I hope that Durham continues to be at the forefront in fighting against House Bill 187 and all other duplicate bills that would be coming up to ensure the safety and education of our young people. As I close, in the words of the astound philosopher, the great philosopher Snoop Doggy Dogg, it's time for us to call 187 on House Bill 187. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kim Singletary, followed by Maya Sutherland, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name.
Hi, I'm Dr. Kim Singletary. I'm an emergency physician. I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter, who could not be here, but she's very passionate about this subject. She sent me 10 minutes worth of notes. I'm sorry, she sent me 10 minutes worth of notes, and I will try to summarize. Basically, she is very passionate about the need for a new track for Hillside High School. She is co-captain of the team. She has been on the team and went to Nationals that last year. She would like for you to know that she finished eighth in pole vault in Nationals and 11th in long jump. She believes these were under her possibility of achievement because she says the thing that is holding her back is physical pain. She and her teammates suffer from physical pain from the lack of repair of the track. The track is hard, the surface is hard, is not up to the standard that it should be for these kids to work as hard as they are working. She, let's see, she is concerned that this is a pivotal part of the community of Hillside. The track doesn't just serve the track team, it serves the football team, the basketball team, all of which have won major conference titles recently. She says they are a family in their Hillside Track Team, and she hurts because her family is hurting. She is very, very frustrated by this. Let me just make sure I got all of her comments. She is also worried about her future health. She is worried that these lower extremity injuries, that her knees, her ankles, the shin splints will lead to future problems with the health and activity of her teammates. And so she's worried about being 20 years old and trying, 30 years old, and trying to be active because she's been working her body very hard. She, let me, I'll give you some of her words because she put a lot of time, and she said, "It's a shame," what did she say? "She's ashamed and a disgrace to our," she didn't disgrace, "disservice to our ability and our effort not to have a healthy facility for them to practice on." Let's see, I think that is it. If my time, there's something she would have wanted me to say. Let's see, she had 10 minutes. Let's see, hold on a second, and I have another. Basically, she says she thinks these things could be, she thinks these things could be avoided if the track was a better facility, and that's what she's very frustrated about. And had me come out here and do what she's, because she's very passionate about this. So she would like to hear from you guys that you guys are going to fix this track for her this season. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Singletary, I also note that you can email her comments to the Board of Education. It's B O E at dpsnc.net, because I know she's got a lot of notes, it looks like.
Yes, yes.
All right, next would be Maya Sutherland, and then last, Omar Beasley.
Good evening, Dr. Mabinga and members of the board. My name is Maya Sutherland, and I'm a student at Hillside High School. I'm here tonight to ask you to consider installing a new track at Hillside High School. I feel the current conditions of our track has been, thank you. Yes. Good evening, Dr. Mabinga and members of the board. My name is Maya Sutherland, and I'm a student at Hillside High School. I'm here tonight to ask you all to consider installing a new track at Hillside High School. I feel the current conditions of our track has been the main factor of my shin splints as well as other athletes. The surface is hard and worn. Hillside has several student, I mean, state and nationally ranked runners, and I think we deserve a track that reflects that. This will benefit not only athletes of Hillside High School, but also the district since we host several meets. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Good evening. My name is Omar Beasley. I am the head coach and director of track and field at Hillside High School. First of all, good evening, Dr. Mabinga, Chair Benita, and the rest of the school board. I bring to you, I'm going to read a letter from a podiatrist that has seen several of our athletes at Hillside High School. His name is Dr. Kelsey Armstrong, and he owns Armstrong Podiatry, which is in Durham. "To whom it may concern, I have noticed a steady increase of the number of lower extremity injuries to youth 12 to 18 years old during my 22 years in podiatry, sports medicine. Such pathology as plantar fasciitis, stress fractures, shin splints, and ankle injuries have become all too common. The explanation for this is mostly likely, is most likely multifactorial, including coaching, nutritional, shoe gear, but I believe one important factor is, that could eliminate most of these injuries, is training surface. Children from 12 to 18 are not miniature adults. They have an underdeveloped neuromuscular system. In addition, there are fluctuations in growth during this age in the bones. The increased length of bones also stretch soft tissue, ligaments, tendons, and fascia. The contributing increased stress upon them. To top it off, the neuromuscular system must find a way to navigate through the new body and allow it to function. Unfortunately, the bodies of the youth are more vulnerable to injury than adults. If you introduce a hard, noncompliant surface to this body, you are forcing the underdeveloped neuromuscular system to absorb the shock of the hard surface and try to adapt. Because of the soft tissue is already weak and compromised, they are prone to strains and tears. Furthermore, the shock of the hard surface can also be carried to the bones, making it prone for stress fractures. During my years of coaching track and field athletes, I have always made sure my athletes train on surfaces that were hard enough to promote stability, yet soft enough to absorb the shock of running. These surfaces would include well-maintained grass and polyurethane surfaces. With this philosophy, I have seen fewer injuries from my athletes and corresponding with better performances. We ask you that you would consider removing the latex track over at Hillside High School, which is banned in 22 states, and move to a polyurethane surface, not only for Hillside High School, but the rest of the district. Thank you for your time."
Thank you all, and that concludes our public comments. The next item on our agenda is our consent items. We have a couple of different items that are listed here. The board has reviewed these items in advance, and I'll take any emotion or any discussion. Approval of the consent.
Second.
The move by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Byer. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the Board of Education District 3 Vacancy Interview Questions. So board members, at our last meeting, we went over the timeline for filling the vacant seat that we have for District 3. And we also discussed having, I'm using the word interview, even though it won't be necessarily interactive, but asking folks to come speak before the board in addressing some of the challenges that we're facing. So I sent over some draft questions to you all. There's also a hard copy at your desk if you would like to review those. So we'd ask folks to prepare a 10-minute speech to address those three questions. And then last but not least, what we did in the past, that just had a jar with each one of these topics listed on it, shook the jar, took out a topic, and the person was asked to address the topic within those two minutes. So any questions or comments, edits you would like to see?
So I think I submitted a question on student's safety because I think it's interesting to see kind of how people think about safety as we're struggling with some really complex issues. I see it didn't make the cut, but it got put in one of the ones down below. I'm curious as to whether people think it's worthy of being a major question or not. And then I guess also, Chair Umstead said, like, these ones where we pull from a jar, maybe we have them do two, like, I mean, because there's such variety there as well. So I don't think one quite gets us enough of a, kind of a well-rounded perspective from someone. So that's, that's kind of how I was, those are my two thoughts to get us started talking, at least. I don't have strong feelings about it. I think we'll get a good, these are great questions as a starting place.
Could you say exactly what the question was on safety that you proposed?
If you give me a minute to look it up, I'll find.
Sounds good. I would say generally, until you find it, I think the, I could go either way on incorporating a question on safety. I like the idea of having two topics, having folks speak on two topics below. And I appreciate the integration of all of our different suggestions here. And I think that I could see where the questions at the top are kind of broad and might bring out some of the safety issues or other kind of contemporary concerns that folks have, but.
Yeah. I wrote, "Schools in Durham must be safe and inclusive. Describe what school's safety means to you and what policies you support in order to keep our schools safe." So I thought it was open-ended enough that people could take it in a lot of different directions. And that's how I like writing these questions, and I think that's how we've done it in the past, is just kind of open the door and see where people take the prompt.
Yeah, and these questions are adapted again from what we did in our last interview process. And also, everyone sent me questions, so I tried to synthesize and put what, based on what people sent, how do we make sure we highlight and get some of those? But again, I'm open to suggestions if folks want to include that one in the top three. Just maybe start there. If you would like to see the safety question in the three, I see a nod from Ms. Rogers, Ms. Valdara. Ms. Valdara says, "Yes, Chavez." So what if we take number three and made that into the safety question? No? Okay.
Or what if we just add it as a fourth? I mean, and then that gives people two and a half minutes kind of vaguely on each topic, kind of.
As we work through this, I understand the hesitation about removing number three, but as we think through our new policies and our conflict of interest form, would our conflict of interest forms speak to some of that?
To number three about how you'll work with folks?
Well...
I don't think so.
Okay, so we want to keep number three. Okay. Are we going to ask them to share about any conflicts that they might have?
That's a good question. The form is, the way the policy is written is for board members. And I don't know, Mr. Malone, if you have thoughts on if we want to get potential conflicts in advance of...
Yeah, I was pondering that. I certainly think you could, let's say, when you're notifying people of the time of their interview, you could ask that they forward to the superintendent a couple days before the meeting a list of anything that would be a conflict under the policy. You could theoretically send them the form that I think staff developed and just ask them to return that as part of it so that you'd have that ahead of time. I would probably do it that way. Um, I would probably do it that way instead of asking it as a question so they'd have time to make sure that it's pretty accurate in their response. That'd be my thought if you wanted to address that ahead of time. Otherwise, you can, obviously, once they are on the board, they'd have to complete the form at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. So we can do, send that out to folks who apply, and so we can get that completed before. So if we add a fourth question on, uh, safety, um, any other, that will take that out of the bottom, any other?
I'm just wondering, um, if we put in the question about safety, then, which I, um, support that. The question, or the topic at the bottom seems to get at mental health generally, so is there something? Do we want to incorporate? The wellness part suggests mental health to me, so, um, do we want to incorporate that into the safety question or leave it as a, like, mental health supports as a topic at the bottom?
I think leaving it open is probably the right way to go so that people can take safety in the way that they want. I think we also know we're very committed to mental health support as a board already, and so I, I think I would like to leave it open so that people can go where they need to. It doesn't maybe feel like we're being prescriptive about what we think safety means.
What do you think about the idea of them, the things at the bottom, them choosing one, and then we draw different, like, so they have some choice in what they choose to talk about as one of their things is also interesting? What do you, do you think that would be? Worthy of consideration? I don't, I mean. Um, I support that.
I'm just watching, um, the public can't see, but I see head nods from our board members on the, um, and Ms. Valdara says she supports that. Ms. Rogers? Yes.
So they would choose one, and then we would give them one at random?
Yes.
I like that. That's fine. I have one other little minor thing. Can we put LGBTQ plus IA? Plus, we just put the plus.
And the gender part, because gender's in the title, right?
I wasn't putting the policy. I was just
Okay.
kind of leaving it open.
Open. Okay. That's cool. How long do we think we want to spend with each candidate? Is this getting a little lengthy now?
Yeah, so we have, we have the speech under, under 10 minutes. We could shorten it if we wanted to say under eight minutes. But with what we've laid out, you're looking at about 15 minutes per candidate. When we did this in the last round, um, some people didn't take all that time. A lot of people didn't take all that time. It also will depend on how many applicants apply. We'll have to think about that as well, but I would like to make sure the time is set. It was thirty, the whole was 30 minutes. And I think we had like eight applicants. All right.
So can you remind me the other dates that we also talked about, or are we gonna do that in a minute?
Yeah, we, I want to make sure we're finished with this part first and then move to the date question. So we feel good about those edits to the process.
And I like the conflict of interest.
I got the conflict of interest form here. So I'll work with, um, Ms. Smith to get these edits up on the website, these complete and edits up on the website. The next thing I wanted to bring attention to was the dates. On the timeline, we have, we looked at March 7th and 8th as the dates we did in case there were a lot of applicants. So I would hold both of those dates on your calendar. Starting with the 7th, that will be the. Hopefully, we may have one date, but if we need to, we can have the 8th as well.
What time?
Um, I will say five. Ms. Valdara, does that work for you?
Okay, I would need to do 5:30 on the 7th.
5:30, okay, so we'll do 5:30.
Right.
We'll do, hold that for March 7th and 8th. And then March 16th was the other date that I listed here, and that would mean that we'd need to do another specially called meeting. We have 60 days to fill the seat, and so if we wait till March 23rd, we're cutting it really close on the actual full, um, amount of time, that 60 days. So this would be a new meeting on March 16th. We would come, we would vote on the applicant, and that would be the end of the meeting. Um, so that's the proposed new date. That'll be the only agenda item. 5:30. So I'm looking at everyone. That looks, sounds good.
All right, you said on the, for the nine, March?
16th.
Oh.
That wouldn't work for you?
Yeah.
Is there another day that week, Ms. Valdara? Okay. Yeah. So let's do the 16th. I'll, we'll make sure you are there whether virtually or in person. We'll make sure we get that. All right.
I'm, I'm sorry. Are you expecting me to be at any of these meetings?
Mr. Malone, should, I don't, I don't think so. What do you?
Different boards do it different ways. I mean, um, if you don't feel that you need me, that's perfectly fine. I'm just.
Wanting to know your calendar.
I just, do I need to add it to my calendar or not? That's all.
I think we should definitely be okay in the interviews, and I think the vote should be okay too. That'll be our only agenda item.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. So I'll work with Nicole to edit this input, make sure these times on our calendar and we'll notice these meetings. And? Excuse me?
Yeah, are we voting March 16?
Yes.
So we need to set up a system if she's gonna be on Zoom.
We, yes, we'll do that. And we, in the past, it was all on Zoom, so we can do that. Mr. Malone, can you be there on March the 16th? When we vote?
I'm sure I can, hold on.
Yeah, you or someone from Fairness and Smith for the vote.
Uh, is this gonna be in the evening? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Yes, I'm available.
Thank you so much. All right.
Can, can I just go over one thing? So for, um, the process, we're not going to ask candidates questions. They're going to present to us, and then we're taking what they give us, and that's it. Okay, 15 minutes apiece.
So they'll have about 10 minutes for their speech, and then we'll have an opportunity for them, two minutes to address a topic that they choose. Another two minutes for us to give a topic.
Okay.
So I'm allocating 15 minutes. Move to the next person.
All right. Sounds great. Thanks.
And I will say, when people submit their information, you will have contact information, so there'll be email addresses and phone numbers. If there was something you want to follow up with a candidate on and have more of a dialogue, that's possible. Um, I think we don't want to do too much dialogue back and forth in the, in the board meeting space. Right. All right, thank you all. So we'll work on these edits. We'll get everything posted, and we look forward to welcoming a new member to our board.
I, I'm sorry, what time on the 16th?
5:30.
5:30, thanks.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the capital project amendment. Uh, I think I'm gonna pass this to Mr. LaSour. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, thank you, um, Chair Olstead. Tonight, we bring to you the late, um, the capital projects that we want to, uh, add funding to, to be able to get some completion to some of these projects and get them rolling. Um, this is the kickoff, I would say, of your 2022 Geo Bonds that was passed by the, by the community in the fall. So, um, we're at a point now where they're gonna allow us to start spending some of this. Um, and this is the project breakdown. We're showing you the increases in the projects, uh, for the purpose of getting two schools built and then, uh, other projects along the way. Um, we met with the county on Monday. Uh, they gave us some information, uh, and had us revise what we were sending to them previously. Um, so this is a scaled-down version. We'll come back to you more with more information. Uh, I can bring up, uh, Mr. Davis, if you'd like, uh, to go over the projects a little bit. Uh, otherwise, uh, we ask that you do this so we can get it to the county for their 27th board meeting.
Uh, Ms. Valdara is?
Thank you so much, Mr. LaSour. Um, what you were mentioning is like the kickoff from that general bond, right? Um, that means that we haven't spent any money from that bond yet, or when you say kickoff, I just?
Yeah, that's correct. They, the county had, had time to plan on how they were gonna develop the overall plan because it's not just Durham Public Schools. And now they're ready to be able to allow us to utilize the funding to move our projects forward. Many of the other projects were u- utilizing, uh, previous Geo Bond dollars, uh, or LOBS dollars. So this is adding those dollars in to get the projects going big time.
So, I'm so appreciative of this, uh, voters in the community supporting this work and getting these projects started. They voted overwhelmingly in November. Um, I just want to clarify, at, at least from my understanding, this line that says DSA new school, that is not the entirety of the project budget, and I don't want anyone to think that it is. Um, gone are the days when we could get a school, an entire school for those prices. Um, and we've talked in other meetings and, and folks have heard us, um, cost of construction in North Carolina and across the country has escalated, um, and is out of our control. But, um, we look forward to working with the county and in partnership to quickly and thoughtfully move forward on all of these projects. And we have another eight elementary schools and other projects coming just behind, um, as well as renovating some of our existing campuses. So I look forward to, to you all's leadership pushing us forward with this important work, and thank you for that.
Other comments or questions from board members? This is for Action tonight, Mr. LaSour. Did want to add, um, we have this up on the screen so the folks in the public can see it, and you all presented this a little bit to us, but just illuminate these numbers around the increases in the budget. And while we have one of the largest bonds, and we're so thankful and appreciative to our community, the cost of construction is, is quickly eating at that. So if you could just illuminate some of where we see, um, the increases are and, and what that revised budget number looks like.
Sure, and so, uh, just to be clear, uh, the current budget represents limited obligation bonds. Those are funds that we use to begin these projects through design. The amount that says increase in budget, that is money that we're using from the 2022 bond referendum. Okay, so it's not the entire budget for the, um, for the project. This is just saying that once we add, for instance, for Murray Massenberg, 72 million, to the 10 million that we already received in different type of funding, then its total revised budget will be $83 million. We would do something similar with Durham School of the Arts, um, as we go through the design process. Um, with Glenn Elementary School, the reason why, um, it's gonna have its entire budget of 59 million is because we're done with that design process. As a matter of fact, we're gonna bid it in April, okay? The rest of the projects are a little bit, um, staggered in where they are with design as, uh, because they're in priority order. So as they complete their design process, we will go back to the county and ask for whatever budget we need for construction, and then you will see their total, uh, project budget will be in the revised column.
Thank you, Dr. Monk, helping illuminate kind of what these numbers mean. I think that's really important. Any other comments or questions from board members? All right, this is for Action.
Move approval of the capital project amendment.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Byer. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously.
Will this be added to the packet online for public consumption?
Yes, this will be added to the packet online.
Thanks.
I think it, it might already be up there, but we'll add it to the packet online. The next item on our agenda is Academic Services DPS IT update. I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. Hardy.
Thank you so much, Chair Olstead, Dr. Rhabenga, board members. So, I know we have folks out in the hall, and I know the presentation is coming. Want to go ahead and get started. I know they're working on pulling that presentation up so that we can keep our meeting, um, going. Perfect. This evening, we are gonna provide an infer, an update regarding our Information and Technology Department. Tonight, this is before you for Action regarding funding for our staff devices in the amount of over $4.5 million for ESAR federal funding and for administrative staff in the amount over $1.7 million that will come from our state and local funding. We will have time at the end of our presentation for questions. Next slide, please. Tonight, we will intentionally talk about a few items. We want to make sure that we provide an overview of our department, the support metrics known as our key performance indicators, our infrastructure update, project plans, and we will make sure that we provide an update regarding next steps so you can anticipate what's on the horizon. I would also like to take this time to acknowledge Ms. Giovanni, Chief of Staff, and Dr. Julius Monk, Deputy Superintendent for Operations, for their leadership and support in our district's technology journey over the past several years. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Ms. Joy Malone, Executive Director of Information Technology.
Dr. Hardy. First, I would like to welcome members of our. Okay. Okay, um, thanks, Dr. Hardy. Um, first, I would like to welcome members of our DPS IT team who have come to participate in our presentation this evening. Can you please welcome our DPS IT team members? Awesome. This, this is actually over half of our team. Um, I often tell our team members of, I come to board meetings every other Thursday night. Uh, many of them have never actually attended a board meeting or have watched a board meeting, so they are live and live in color tonight. So thanks so much, team. So DPS Information Technology. We are the team behind the creation, the integration, and support of all staff, students, and system accounts. That is nearly 40,000 active accounts. We are also the team behind procuring, inventorying, supporting, and decommissioning all IT hardware when it reaches its end of life. That includes, but is not limited to laptops, desktops, bright links, and voice-over-IP office phones. That is nearly 83,000 devices. Our team vision, if we can go to the next slide, it spells out DPS IT. D is for dependable. P is for partnership. S is for service. I is for innovation. And lastly, T is for transformative. Next slide, please. Alignment to the DPS strategic plan is critical in our team's understanding of how we fit and why we matter to DPS. Our work is directly tied to Priority One, increased academic achievement. Goal 1D is our current target to ensure by 2023, all 100% of our teachers, leaders, and staff will use technology as a tool for accelerating and personalizing student learning. We have two strategies in which we focus on. Number three, to implement a process to standardize technology devices for every certified staff member. And strateg, and strategy five, to ensure that our technology and infrastructure are supported for sufficient network capacity. As a reminder, from the Priority One Board Update, in 2021, 2022, we exceeded our benchmark. in 2021, 2022, we exceeded our benchmark goal of 80% on the Goal D1 survey. The survey for 2022, 2023 will be conducted soon. Next slide, please. So now we'll take a look at some of our team's key performance indicators. So in 2019, DPS purchased a tool called Fresh Service. Fresh Service is a cloud-based IT service management solution that enables organizations in the public and private sector to simplify their IT operations. When a customer, and we consider our customers as DPS staff members, students, parents, and guardians, if they have an IT request or issue, they can submit a ticket via Fresh Service to our team in one of three ways. They can email itsupport@dpsnc.net. They can access us online at our portal at itsupport.dpsnc.net. Or they can call our DPS IT Support Center. On this slide, you can view by school year the total number of IT support tickets our DPS IT Support Team has received. Additionally, you can see by school year, the average first response and average resolution time. The average first response is the average duration between a customer requesting support and the first non-automated reply from a technician. The average resolution time is the average time taken by a technician to solve an open issue or a request. So during the previous two school years, our team's average first response and average resolution times are nothing to be proud of. However, I am excited to report that currently, for the 2022, 2023 school year, we have significantly reduced our average first response and average resolution times, and we are achieving our service level agreements to the district. These results were made possible by the following. And as I call your job titles, I would like our technicians to please stand. 11 IT Support Assistants. And these Thank you. You may be seated. And these are ESER-funded positions. We have 10 Tier One Technicians. We have five Tier Two Technicians. And we have two Team Leads. Next slide, please. When DPS purchases student and staff devices, each device is procured with a warranty. Our current warranty on student devices is four years unlimited accidental damage protection. Our current warranty for staff devices is five-year accidental damage protection with one claim allowed per calendar year. DPS IT currently partners with Celltech, a vendor based out of Hillsborough, North Carolina, to complete our warranty repairs. On this table, you can review the number of devices Celltech has repaired for our district by school year. Next slide, please. Cybersecurity. We've seen and we've heard the headlines. School districts across the country are being hit by hackers and some paying ransom. Within our IT department, we are continuously working to ensure we have the right programs, the right processes, and the right people to manage and mitigate cybersecurity risk for our entire district. Some of the items our team has accomplished is updating our district password standards, implementing multi-factor authentication for all staff members, and we have deployed Noble4, which is a security awareness tool combined with simultaneously sorry, with, sorry, combined with simulated phishing attacks that was funded by the state. Next slide, as we take a look at some of the information Noble4 has been able to provide since its implementation in DPS. So this table shows the phishing exercises performed within DPS using Noble4. The exercise sends emails that can either be, that sends emails and can either be an attachment to be opened or a link to be clicked to calculate our district's phishing-prone percentage. Our work in this area will never be done because hackers are becoming more sophisticated in their attempts to prey on our students and our staff to interrupt our educational systems. As we continue to educate our staff and students on how to be technologically vigilant and responsible, not only in DPS, but also outside of DPS. Now I will turn it over to our Director of IT Operations, Mr. Palmer Jumby, and he will provide an update on network availability as well as infrastructure update.
Evening, board members. Dr. Ambenga. This slide highlights the to all DPS sites. Over the past 10 years, we have upgraded our bandwidth capacity from 500 megabytes in 2014 to 1 gigabyte in 2019. And currently, we're upgrading all sites 10 gigabytes of bandwidth capacity. This is bandwidth is sufficient enough to accommodate all outbound and inbound traffic as a one-to-one district. If your computer is slow, definitely it's not a bandwidth issue right now. The table below shows our average network availability across all sites for the last six months. Our goal is to always have 100% availability, but power outages, cut fiber lines, and other factors do hinder us from the perfect score. Next slide, please. This next slide highlights some of the technical technology infrastructure works being carried out by the IT department. Before I go through this slide, I would like to first organize the operations team that helps support this infrastructure. We have system administrators, Raymond and Ajish Chari. I don't think we have a Ajish Chari in here. We have network engineers, Omar Parkins and Scott Williams, and our junior SQL developer, Deep Teacher Quad. Next slide, please. With approval from the board and administration, we're able to refresh and upgrade our backup environment. Pending right now is the refresh and upgrade of the production environment. This environment contains the district servers and storage. We're in the process of putting out an RFP, and we should bring a recommendation for approval very soon. Again, with approval from the board and administration to apply for E-Rate funding, we embarked on refreshing and upgrading our wireless network. We have so far completed our pilot phase of installing 129 access points at Durham School of the Arts. And with the performance feedback that we received, we're going over. We are currently embarking on installing 800 additional access points in 15 schools. This should be completed next month. We also, the application for E-Rate funding for additional 1,341 access points to fully upgrade all remaining schools was part of the consent items that were approved earlier this evening. The 2023, 24 applications also include an additional 380 switches. We should make all the switches at all school sites current and upgraded. We continue to collaborate with our colleagues in the maintenance and construction department. And with that collaboration, Lyons Farm Technology Infrastructure was procured and deployed successfully. And in the pending projects, we do have the Northern High School, Murray Massenberg Elementary, Glenn Elementary, and Bethesda Elementary. Other completed projects include a new account provisioning and deprovisioning tool, which will further improve our staff and student onboarding processes. We have also installed a logging tool, which would further assist the team with troubleshooting and managing infrastructure in a much better way. To be completed soon, too, is the upgrade of our phone systems, and that should be completed also next month. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul. Now to discuss student and staff device refresh plans. Next slide, please. DPS officially became a one-to-one district in 2020. And all schools worked to assign students a Chromebook as a tool to support the facilitation of instructions inside and outside the walls of a classroom. In November of 2021, DPS IT implemented its first Chromebook certification process. This process includes reconciling our one-to-one plus inventory management system and partnering with our schools, their principals, and tech champions to physically validate the number of Chromebooks they have at their site, the number of Chromebooks assigned to students, and confirm the count of any missing, lost, or stolen student devices. In this table, you will find the results of our most recent Chromebook certification that was conducted in November of 2022. The number of missing and lost and stolen devices is approximately 10% of our inventory. And as we work with other districts, we are seeing similar numbers in this area. In addition to our Chromebook certification information, we have included the number of chargers DPS has purchased for students and staff this, so far this school year and the estimated cost. Next slide, please. When we look at a student device, we are less concerned about when the device goes out of warranty. And we're most concerned about how many years can a device be used to provide optimal performance and allow students to complete instructional and curriculum needs. Currently, our student Chromebooks are on a four-year refresh cycle. This school year, we have already upgraded 8,058 Chromebooks, and we removed those that no longer had optimal performance. In this chart, you see the number of Chromebooks slated to be refreshed over the next three school years. Our team is already working with our CFO, Mr. Paula Sore, to manage the funding of these devices. Next slide, please. So now on to staff devices. DPS IT has implemented a four-phase approach to refreshing our student devices, our staff devices. Over the next couple of slides, we will briefly discuss the phases of refreshing our staff devices and then go into details about what is before you for action. Currently, we are in the procure phase, and we are acquiring the new staff devices. And this includes identifying the right device that would allow staff members to perform their job functions and completing the procurement process. Next is the deployment phase, which includes assigning, delivering, and ensuring that every staff member receives their new district-issue device, and it has the applications and software needed for them to perform their job functions. Next slide, please. Then there is the maintenance and support, maintain and support phase. This is the current phase for our existing staff devices. The standard Dell devices DPS leased in 2018 are approaching the end of their five-year lease. Many of these devices have experienced battery failures, and the device itself is worn. The cost of maintaining the device outweighs the cost of replacing it. The final phase of the refresh plan is to retire and dispose of obsolete equipment that no longer provides educational value to our district. Next slide, please. So the procure phase will conclude in the April-May timeframe of this year. To reduce interruptions and to, we will start with the deployment phase. And that will be in the summer completion around the August-September timeframe. The recommendation is to decrease the maintain and support phase of this plan from five years to four years. On average, a personal computer can last a user for three to five years. Based on analysis from other school districts and our internal IT support metrics, four years is that place in the middle. I call it that sweet spot of being able to manage the cost of maintaining the device and still making sure that it does not outweigh the cost of replacing it. This refresh plan and timeline would mean all DPS staff members would receive a brand-new device issued to them during the summer of 2023. And these devices will serve our district into the summer of 2027, when they would be retired and disposed for the refresh cycle to start again. Next slide, please. As the strategy states, we must implement a process to standardize these technology devices for every certified staff member. On this slide, we have identified the device manufacturer, the model, and the cost for the standard device for all instructional staff members. Instructional staff members include, but are not limited to, teachers, instructional assistants, coaches and coordinators, counselors, and social workers. As noted, on the line item for ECF funding, our department applied and was awarded $1,386,000 for emergency connectivity funding to procure these devices. That is approximately $400 per device when you total that for the 3,465 devices needed for our instructional staff members. And working with our CFO, Paula Sore, and our Senior Executive Director of Federal Programs and Community Engagement, Dr. Dietrich Danner, the district will use ESER and federal funds to cover the DPS remaining balance of $4,041,217.39. Next slide, please. On this slide, we have identified the device manufacturer, the model, and cost for the standard device for all admin staff members. Admin staff members include our superintendent and cabinet members, principals, assistant principals, and directors and above. Again, ESER and federal funds will be used to cover the DPS balance of these admin staff devices in the amount of $529,370.31. Next slide, please. On this slide, we have identified the device manufacturer, the model, and cost for the standard device for all support staff members. Support staff members include functional staff in departments such as finance, IT, and operations. State and local funds will be used to cover the DPS balance Next slide, please. So this is the final section of our presentation agenda. We can go to the next slide. And it is technology, equity, sustainability, and next steps. As we close, I just want to provide some updates and some more information about next steps. In partnership with safety and security, we identified a need that 550 phones were needed to ensure all lockdown spaces in our schools and admin offices had access to call the front office and 911. These phones have been ordered, and we are awaiting their arrival so DPS IT can work to configure each of them and ensure its connectivity to the desired location. Additionally, we have been working with safety and security to implement an emergency call center, and we will be conducting a drill soon. Interactive Display and Brightlink Refresh. DPS began purchasing Brightlink projectors for classrooms in 2018. Upon my arrival in 2021, there was no refresh plan in place. In April of 2022, DPS IT hosted an interactive display showcase, and we invited our schools, our families, and community members to join us in test driving some of the latest technology in interactive displays. We have analyzed the feedback we have received. We have analyzed the feedback we have received, and we're currently working to create a three-year and a five-year plan to refresh the nearly thirty-two hundred Brightlink projectors we have in the district. Student Technology Device Care. So earlier, we provided you data related to the number of student and staff device repairs we've had. Our warranty only covers accidental damage. This evening, we would like to share with you some examples of damage that our warranty does not cover. So first here, we have a staff device. This is a staff device that has been damaged. Um, all repairs come into our IT warehouse, and we work to be able to work with our repair vendor, but however, again, it's very clear that this is not an accidental damage, and they will not repair. The next device here is one that, um, I personally got framed. Um, it was actually pulled out of the river by one of our high schools and was brought by my office. We have some examples of, uh, Chromebooks for students. Um, I'll let Crystal quickly show those. Um, you will see primarily on these Chromebooks, actually this one, this was one that a police officer brought by my office. Um, you can bring it up here just a little closer. So this is one where a police officer found alongside the road. You can kind of see how the corner of the device is damaged there where it was scraped alongside the road. Um, a several other of our Chromebooks, um, our most common, um, damage is the LED display. And so you can see on some of these where, um, again, it could be whether maybe a student has put something on the keyboard and closed the monitor, and it cracked the screen, or other things might have happened to it that damaged the screen. Um, and then lastly, um, as we talk about chargers, um, so we had a, uh, a couple of chargers, but here's an example of one where, um, the casing was taken off the charger, um, and again, that's, that's what happens to our chargers. Thank you, Crystal. Um, so next, IT Staff Professional Learning. Similar to the teaching profession, our skills are as only as sharp as we continue to learn. Our DPS IT leadership team, we host weekly internal trainings for our staff technicians. We have also began working with Ms. Terri Phillips, the Director of Classified Professional Development, to facilitate professional learning for our entire team. Student IT Internships. Last year, our team hosted nine DPS high school students who completed a six-week paid internship with our department. They were making fifteen dollars an hour, thanks to the North Carolina Business Committee for Education, sponsored by our Governor Roy Cooper. This is our first semester partnering with Dr. Julie Pack and the CTE team to host in semester IT internships for a course credit. And currently, we have four students at Riverside, three students at Southern, and one student at Jordan. Next, our role of the tech champion. The role of the tech champion has changed. In the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year, our tech champions were asked to maintain a focus of serving all teachers, helping them to integrate technology in the classroom and in their lesson plans, serve as the liaison for digital learning teams, and also serve and co-lead the Media Technology Advisory Committee at their school. In two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three, we updated the responsibility of tech champions. The accountabilities of tech champions have changed, in which now the tech champions should direct all first-line technical support for schools to the DPS IT Support Center. They also must execute the Chromebook certification process that we discussed earlier, and then they can provide feedback to our teams, and then they are invited to participate in the monthly IT Tech Champion Meetings, which are hosted by our teams. Since two thousand and sixteen, the tech champion compensation has been based on ADM. A tech champion that serves up to three hundred and fifty students receives seventy-five dollars a month. A tech champion that serves up to six hundred and fifty students receives a hundred dollars a month. And a tech champion that serves up to six hundred and fifty-one-plus students receives a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. And lastly on the list is Gaggle. Two weeks ago, I stood before you presenting an update on Gaggle. Your follow-up actions were noted, and we are already working to ensure you receive an update in May. So this concludes our presentation. We are truly thankful for your time and your interest in the work that our team does, and now I'll turn it back over to Dr. Hardy.
Thank you, Ms. Malone, Mr. Majumbe, and our IT team behind us. We appreciate your work. Um, at this time, I'll turn it back over to Chair, um, to Dr. Mabinga. We're open for questions. And Board, this is before you this evening for action.
All right, thank you, uh, Ms. Malone and the IT team. Uh, thank you for staying here late tonight. We appreciate everything that you're doing to keep us really moving the district forward. But before you start asking questions, um, I just wanted to remind us that, uh, we're very fortunate to be able to add a lot of position in IT, uh, because of our SR funds. Last year, we were supposed to go to county commissioners to be able to fund half of those positions. It did not happen. And then this year, we're not doing it because we do classified studies, and, uh, that's going to impact everybody, but we need to have a conversation with our county commissioners moving forward next year. That's what we're going to need to sustain those positions. Uh, I know at some point, as we all know, that as, uh, we get to the pandemic, everybody went, uh, started using one-to-one, uh, uh, but if you're looking at the move that our state is, uh, taking, pretty much all the assessments now they're online. So which means whether or not we'd like to continue with one-to-one, with all those assessments, we have to have those devices for our students. Uh, in order to have those devices, we gotta have those technicians being sustained, uh, once we pass SR funds. So there's going to be a financial cliff, uh, moving forward, uh, once we're done with our SR fund, uh, September twenty twenty-four. And I just wanted to bring this up as we're looking at a broad lift that we have to replace in all our classrooms. It may not happen in a year, maybe two or three years. That's all those are really financial responsibility that we have to take to county commissioners. The reason I wanted to make these comments, yes, we're losing about ten percent of our devices. I know other districts as well, but, uh, other districts are putting some measures there to start holding our students accountable for those devices. What happened here, we have some students that had three devices. They keep on losing them. There are no safeguard. When can we stop that? Yes, we've been really lucky. We found a fifty million dollars that we were able to receive with SR funds. Past that, we have really to start really watching what we do with our devices. So at some point in the near future, uh, IT team, or we've been talking about some our recommendations, we understand that all our students and staff, they gotta have devices, but we gotta start putting some safety guard to make sure that we're not losing as many devices as we've done in the past. I think you've seen the example, and, uh, paying about half a million dollars just for, um, the chargers, that's a lot of money. I think if all of us can be really responsible, I think we can start minimizing those costs. That's pretty much my comment. Uh, back to Chair Amstead.
Thank you, Dr. Mabinga, for those comments and, um, for the presentation from the team. Appreciate you all being here. For members, do you have any questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Byer.
Uh, first, I want to start with thanking the IT leadership and the IT team for being here and for your work on a daily basis. It is you who are making these ticket requests go down and the, and everything, making everything run um, and taking the work off of our teachers and our tech champions, um, to some extent, I guess I'm still hearing from them that they are still actually doing a yeoman's work as well, but I don't know why we rewarded you by making you come to a board meeting. I thank you so much for spending this evening with us, and I wanted to like cut it short so y'all can go home. Um, but I also wanted, I heard Dr. Mabinga's comments, and I want you all to stay with us. Some of you haven't been with us a year yet. Some of you haven't been with us two years yet, but you know that serving children and teachers is like one of the hardest things you can do, but also I hope fulfilling to you all in some ways because you see how technology is used as a tool. And we will go to the county and fight for your position, so don't think that we're coming to a financial cliff where we won't fight for you. And actually, we're evaluating positions and getting you up to market rates because we, we know that is so, so critical. So I just can't not look at you all and tell you thank you and, and be appreciative of everything you're doing. I, I also miss our former board colleagues who are IT people could, who could ask you really techie questions because I don't have those. What I do have is like uh, a, a device that's five hundred dollars more for our downtown central office people. What does that do that is above and beyond what the ones we're buying for everyone are? Like, that's when I, I see a five hundred dollar gap there, and I want to know kind of, do we need that extra? Are, are they gaming? I don't think so, but you know what I mean? Like, that's the, that's the, one of the first questions that comes to mind.
They, they are not gaming. We have worked with CTE to, to help provide devices for their department. But when it comes into looking at the specification for an admin-type device, the magnitude of spreadsheets and things like that that they're using, it pulls the, the device memory to be utilized. Um, a lot of our instructional staff, they are using, you know, web-based instructional-type tools. Um, and so that's where that lower-power device comes in.
So that's, that's helpful. Um, I want us to have the best that we can afford, um, and, and stretch them. Four years seems reasonable to me. I want to understand, and I've had some questions from folks on docking stations and how you've surveyed people to actually know whether they want them, need them, would use them so that we don't buy things that aren't needed. And I know sometimes when you tell teachers, do you want a docking station or not, and they've never had one? Well, sure, yes, in schools, you check yes, because if you don't say yes when the, it's presented to you, you won't get it again. New chair, new what it, right? I mean, so, um, that's a big line item, and I want to hear from you all how you're thinking about it and, and how we're not being wasteful in that planning.
Yep. So again, the docking station is an optional type thing if the teacher identifies that they need it or not. That also goes with like the monitor as well. And so a lot of times when our teachers are in the classroom, and especially some of our classrooms now, where they're actually kind of doing, doing dual monitoring, they have to have that docking station to be able to do that.
So, but you're saying you will have some way of surveying folks to see whether they want both of those, that we will just not just blanketly ship them out to everyone?
Oh, no, we, we are not. And so again, as part of our IT ticketing system, if a staff member need, they may not have a docking station today, but if they identify that they need a docking station to be able to better perform their work, they submit a request to our IT team, and then we deliver a docking station to their school. Um, one thing that I would like to say is, again, docking stations are that type of equipment where it can get damaged or broken more easily. So again, being able to have some of those devices readily available in our warehouse, so if a teacher or someone does request it, and we can get them to them fairly quickly, that kind of helps with their instruction.
And as, um, things are breaking, Brightlinks are breaking, do we have any budget or plan as those die? Because they are very, very, very old. We bought them with the nine million we had from the high school. We weren't going to build a long time. I mean, they are very old. What, what is going on with those now? Because I
There are some Brightlinks components, and those components are very difficult for us to procure. We are actually working very closely, um, with Mr. Lassour to make sure that we can not only identify funding source, but also think about what technology is expected and required in our classrooms for our teachers. Um, so, so know that that is definitely something that we're working on. As those requests come in, so as teachers are having any challenges or difficulty with their Brightlinks, they do complete a help desk ticket, and then we're working to make sure that they have what they need at this moment, even though we know some of those items are difficult to procure. Um, but we will be making sure that we have a long-term refresh plan. That was not something that was initially part of the Brightlinks, um, deployment system.
And just how, how are folks deployed in schools? On emergencies, on, we're doing Wi-Fi spots this week, and we're doing VoIP stuff. I made something up. You know, like, how, how do school-based people see these folks helping them?
Awesome. Great question. And so our org chart is actually kind of divided into two teams, our support and our operations team. Our support team are the technicians, IT support assistants that are going out to support the schools. And so how we determine how frequently a technician visit that school is number one, based on their ADM. Then number two, based on the number of tickets that we see coming in for that school. And then we also kind of look at like device damage, device repairs. Also, if that school has a tech champion or not. If that school does not currently have a tech champion, we are sending a technician out to that school more often. Currently, right now, we have two high schools that they do not have a tech champion, and we actually have a dedicated IT team member. Um, I think we have Ginica here. Ginica is dedicated at Southern. And then we have Brittany here, and Brittany is a dedicated IT resource at Northern.
Why wouldn't a school have a tech champion? Perhaps because we don't pay them enough supplemental would be what I would advocate for a higher stipend, because what you told me sounded pitiful.
Yep. And so again, that, that stipend is what we've had since the two thousand and sixteen school year. And so again, principals, they work with their staff to identify someone who can complete that kind of job description for a tech champion. And again, it has really been like a no-pressure type role from an IT department standpoint. Because again, if they tell us that, hey, they can't find anyone, we work with our team leads to make sure we're getting out and supporting those schools.
Yeah, I guess I would just advocate for us to think about in this budget cycle whether those amounts are valid in a, in a one-to-one, um, environment. And then my final question, at least, because I know my colleagues have questions, um, who do we think of district-wide as our lead digital curriculum people? Like, I think of you all as the hardware more, and who are like, how do we think of the leadership there and where that?
So digital teaching and learning sits within our curriculum and instruction office. So you have a director, Ronald Wayland. You also have your digital teaching and learning specialists that are part of our ESAR budget. And remember, those positions were specifically designed to ensure that we are matching what you're hearing today and regarding the, um, the hardware in the, in the infrastructure. So we know that to Mr. Majumbe's point and Ms. Malone's, we need these devices to work. You need to be able to connect. But then you need to be able to use what you have access to, to not only complete your work if you're a district leader, but also work with your children if you're in the classroom and connected to kids. So that is the, the foundation of one D. It's really making sure that our staff have the devices they need to accelerate and personalize learning. Our students need to have that device so that they can connect. So you think about not only the assessments, um, almost all of our courses are on Canvas, so teachers are using that as they are monitoring student instruction. That also gives us an opportunity to extend beyond the walls of school. So we have students right now that are probably on, uh, Reveal Math, completing assignments, or on iReady or reading a digital book. And so making sure that there is a device that can help them continue the learning uh, beyond the walls of the classroom. And so that sits in, uh, curriculum instruction. Um, Dr. Tagorian, Mr. Wayland, Ms. Malone, and those teams, they meet regularly to make sure that the decisions that we make match what we're trying to do for our children that we serve.
That was going to be my last thing, and then y'all asked, like, who's going to bring us like their brilliant thinking on what we do with ChatGPT and the instructional environment, right? Where's, are y'all going to bring some of that in the coming weeks, months, how we think about the use of some of those things?
So some of that will come with the renewal every year. If you remember, usually it's May. Sometimes it's early June. We bring to you any renewals that we have for our academic contracts. Many of those are, um, We bring to you any renewals that we have for our academic contracts. Many of those are, um, technology-based. So you will see some of that then, of course, at any request as we work with Dr. Mavenga or Chair Umstead. Happy to bring you updates as needed to the board.
Uh, Ms. Rogers and Ms. Vali Dara should be after that.
Okay. Thank y'all for being here. Um, really appreciative. I can't tell you how many tickets I've put in over the last two weeks for my own devices at my own job. So I really appreciate you. Um, but I do want to ask a few questions. And the first question that I had when I reviewed the slides were about the chargers and the Chromebooks. Specifically, what's, how do you define the difference between number of Chromebooks stolen and missing slash lost?
Yes. So for missing, so I'll start with stolen. Before we consider a device stolen, we actually have to have a police report. So if there is no police report that is provided in our system, it is automatically goes to missing and lost.
That's helpful. Thank you. And I know we're talking about accountability to students in regards to these devices and educators. And it's been a forever kind of thing, right? With textbooks and the next thing and the next thing, library books and it follows you for your whole career. Um, I can't get that diploma without it, you know? How do we ensure that chargers are staying with Chromebooks at school? And do we end up with a surplus of chargers at the end of the school year? At schools for, you know, like in the lost and found or whatever?
Um, no, we, we have, we have, since I've been here, there has not been a surplus of chargers. And a great number of those chargers that were included in there were for students who did not turn in their charger at the end of last school year. And we had to purchase those chargers during the summer to make sure when we redeploy devices back out, that every child got a charger with their Chromebook.
Perfect. Thank you. Um, and then my question was about this slide and I guess in the refresh plan. Do we have any data in regards to what level of students are damaging slash losing devices more often? So elementary versus middle versus high?
Yes. And so in partnering with, um, the vendor Cell Tech, we actually have monthly meetings with them and they provide us the reporting that tells us that else, that LED screens are the most frequently to be damaged. And then it also breaks down where we can see by what school those damages are being reported from.
And we see that.
Sure.
I mean, like maybe annual or something like that. I don't know. Um, I'm, I'm just thinking all this through. It's like real quick. Um, and a whole lot of money. Um, the docking stations that are currently in use, have we done a survey? That talks about how they're being used or how many are actually being, being used? So we know that we need to refresh those?
So we have not done like an official survey.
Okay. Can we, can we talk about how we, if we do that in the future? Before we?
So one of the things that is before you tonight for action, we, and I know that you are looking, I think my slides have different numbers, not necessarily. So on that slide, it, I think we're talking about, um, the thirty, the 3,465 docking stations that we're requesting at a cost of $177. Um, you know, we can work if we do need to adjust the motion from Rod. We do want to make sure that we have access to ensure that we have the tools that are needed. And one of the things that we can make sure that we're doing is, um, not only monitoring the use of those and the requests, but to make sure that they are being used, very similar to the loner devices that we have at schools to ensure we don't want there to be an interruption in access and productivity. So if a teacher's docking station is not working and they have children that are getting ready to be there, we don't want to then need to put in an order. That would impact instruction. The same as when a child's device is not working and they need to be able to access i-ready. We have loner devices at the school, so that young person can continue with their instruction. So know that those are primary, um, we want to make sure that we're solution oriented and we're not delaying. So that is why that request is there before you tonight and we, um, would appreciate your support.
I am not suggesting we delay. I am suggesting that we spend the S R funding this way and agreeing with that request, but I'm suggesting that it, it will come to an end, the S R funding, and we'll have to find funding for that. And we want to make sure that we're using our local and state funds in the best ways possible. And therefore we need to know in the future before we have to order more. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this presentation. I have some comments. Um, you know, looking at the presentation, yeah, you provided what I would call just the framework of, of how you're, uh, thinking about devices in terms of a life cycle, the life cycle. So I'm going to keep saying, I'm going to sound redundant because with Gaggle, I'm like the life cycle, the life cycle, right? So starting with procurement, you know, and then you're talking about how you're distributing that piece of distribution. I know it was a challenge during the COVID pandemic. I remember, and I just, I just have a lot of gratitude because when folks are waiting for their devices, they're, you know, there's, there's a level of, you know, rapport and just, you know, folks want their devices, right? And I have just watched this department navigate all the complexity of the pandemic, how to distribute devices. You know, how to, uh, approach challenges and just overcome challenges. IT, the work that all of you are doing, I really want to give you all a hand. Is that okay? I really, you deserve a hand. We're talking about a community that faces a digital divide. Um, a community that, you know, in many, in many homes, the parents don't operate computers and in some homes they do. But the reality is that I have heard of even requests, your department gets interesting requests too, like can the parents use the, use the device of the child? You know, this is the, this is the kind of environment we work in where we are currently and every single day having to grapple with the systemic inequalities, the inequities that our families face and how that comes to us as a system. And you know, how we have those conversations about, well, we can, we need the students to have access to the device. You know, we need, we need to make sure that the charger, you know, and, and, and the device is, is together. There's so many considerations and there's so much complex, complexity with this. And I have just, you know, watched this department just, you know, and have, and I'm also seeing the presentation, the level of transparency about your key performance indicators. You talked about, you know, the, the tickets and you don't, you didn't, you know, maybe we would have asked or, or who knows? But you know, just the fact that you decided to include those years prior and just saying, this is where we're working from. You know, it, it is just a testament to number one, this department, uh, as any IT department grappling with really complex things. But at the same time, having, um, you know, just no shame in the game. No shame in, and I tell everybody there's no shame in the game because this level of transparency is what people come to appreciate. And they're like, when you see the number of tickets on there, they thought, they thought maybe there are only 10 tickets. How many, you know, we're talking about orders of magnitude beyond, beyond that. So just a whole level of gratitude for all the tickets. The other thing I wanted to talk about, um, is the phones, you know, and seeing that update on there. And I know that I have, I have sent, you know, just, just the questions. It's this kind of the same thing where folks want it yesterday or tomorrow or like they want it. And yet, you know, that process, just the ability of, of also like hearing these concerns that community brings. Um, when it comes to, they'd like to have not just the phone next door. They want it in where they are, in every single place where there's a need for it. And sometimes, you know, we have to meet the demand with a lot of factors, including procurement, which is the life cycle that we go back to the first step, right? Procuring a phone, what does it take? You know, getting the quote or, you know, well, there's a couple of steps before that. But then, you know, getting the P O, the purchase order, and there's all levels of how that operates in the system. And so I am just, um, applauding you all for all of these updates, including all this that, you know, there's so many different pieces to it. Um, and, uh, if you care to share anything, because I know you, you, this is already in, in the works in terms of the phones. So, um, I just want to provide also any, any comments you all want to do. Just one last thing after, after that.
Ms. Malone, do you want to share the timeline that we are looking at in terms of our phones?
Yep. So the purchase order has been issued, the, um, thanks to Crystal and working with the team to get that done. I think the ETA was about a month and a half. Um, and so we're waiting for that time. Again, you know, we're still dealing with supply chain and things like that. Um, but we did find a vendor that did have the phones. We are already before now the phones arrive, working on our deployment plan. So we have the information from safety and security to say how many schools or what schools needed how many phones. Um, being able to work with those schools to identify where those phones need to go to make sure that when we do receive them, we can start the deployment process.
That is so wonderful. And the, you know, thank you so much because I know that, um, you know, when we convey these, these, these questions or the concerns and the timeline sometimes is not as clear, but this, this timeline is for the community to know that this is definitely something, um, that is, you know, creating safety, uh, added layers of safety, because we continue to add layer after layer after layer. Um, my last, speaking of safety, my goodness, this is a big one. So when I think about, um, you know, you go to the doctor and I just heard this today from somebody, so I'm not going to take credit for this. A doctor told, uh, the patient and said, um, you know, I'm not going to quote it correctly, but the idea is that, you know, I can, I can make you feel good and tell you that I think it's not a problem. Like what, what you, what you're bringing to me. I mean, it, maybe it's not a problem, but I'm a doctor and I've gone through and evidence is super important and the data is what's going to drive it. And the reality is that I, I don't want, I not, I'm not going to stop with just making you feel good or saying, I think it's not a problem. I actually think let's go ahead and get the diagnosis that is needed, do that extra step because we need that data. You know, I can think it's okay, but we need that data. One of the, the numbers that is most exciting about the work that you have done, um, when it comes to cybersecurity, that piece, I mean, we can make people, you know, feel good that, you know, we're not sending so many emails to their inbox and tripping them up. And that, that tripping piece is, is also part of this because in order, I, I, I know it ties with our insurance. It ties with so much, so much of, um, the stability that we can have, that these emails have to look like the real deal. If people can tell they're a counterfeit from the get-go and don't even try it and our metrics show that they're not clicking, we're not doing our job of actually making sure that every single click, you know, that we're actually trying our best to make it look real, right? Kind of like money counterfeit money versus it has to look like the real thing. And so, um, I am so grateful that you included, you know, the clicks and there's no shame in this game at all. If you, if, if one of our staff falls for any of these things, this is a, it could be a real life scenario, you know? And so it's a learning experience. I'm wondering about that step of like, what, what happens after I click on that? I just want to hear like, you know, what happens? I, I made the mistake and I, oh, they told me they were going to give me, I don't know. And I'm like, what is this? Who's sending this? This is going to give some anyways.
Yep. So, um, when we send a, a communication out via noble for, um, noble for if you open the attachment or click the link, it gives you a prompt right then to say this was a phishing exercise. And it kind of tells you like, you know, you failed. Um, and so again, on our backend, again, we send out information to the district. After all of this, uh, exercises has gone out to be able to state the number of staff members who clicked the link or opened the attachment, um, and kind of what is our phishing prone percentage? Um, the thing is for the district, we send out quarterly phishing alerts. However, for anyone who has admin access to our IT systems, they receive a phishing alert monthly. And again, that goes to, they have that elevated access. And again, when we think about, it just takes one click. Um, it just takes, um, someone sending back their phone number and then their phone number has been compromised and then they have, uh, fishers who are then texting them personally. Um, we've seen it.
I'm, I just had a, you know, to finish the thought about the cybersecurity piece, um, if I may, the, the reality is that there are, and I've been delving into tech, and so I'm going to give life cycle credit to those folks that are very smart from, you know, that are, that are, that are working on, um, artificial intelligence. I've, you know, I've just been checking and hearing and I've been, it kind of rubs off on you. So if I say life cycle again, forgive me, but it's kind of in green in my head, like framework, you know? Um, but I will say that with the cybersecurity, um, in many organizations, what they're doing is they're putting, it's not a penalty, but it's a learning opportunity where they will have to do, have like an LMS kind of level. Here's why we don't want to click. These are the kind of things. And I'm not saying do that, that I don't, I, I don't want people to, uh, think that I'm trying to implement a penalty per se, because we, we don't, we don't operate from penalties. But what we want to make sure is that there's, um, a way to, you know, kind of gauge whether folks are, are, are having a learning experience in terms of like, it looks so real and how can we prevent that? Um, so you're everybody's best friend right now, because right now, you know, there's no, you know, LMS and, and having to prove that you clicked on it, you have to do all these things. But the thought of cybersecurity, um, the ways that we have seen it with the other districts that have compromised data. We have precious data, um, social security numbers for, you know, students that are in vulnerable positions uh, in terms of status, mixed status families. And right now there's so much that is happening. So the data that we have is so, so precious. And we have not suffered a loss. And that is a testament of the work that every single, so there is a reason why you're here tonight. This is why you get another applause for me. I know that my word is probably going to be like Alexander's being too much. I'm serious. Like this is, if we get hacked and we lose all our data, you know, it doesn't matter how many sorries or, oh my gosh, like I, I wish it didn't happen. If it happens, it, it is a loss. And for a district that has precious, I mean, all our students are precious, all our families are precious. Their information is precious. And so I just wanted to, you know, just make sure that I really just conveyed how appreciative we are. Um, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Chavez?
I just want to say my thanks as well for this thorough presentation. I think you all are unsung heroes. You keep everything moving. Um, so I appreciate all that you do every day. Um, I wanted to say, um, it was really exciting to hear about the student IT internships. I think that's awesome how you're integrating, you know, all that you're doing with, um, our students learning and being able to be more prepared for, um, actually going into the industry themselves. So that's awesome. Um, I only have a couple of comments about, um, the future presentation um, that you alluded to. And, um, I wanted to say I'll be interested, interested to hear how our district compares to other districts in terms of the missing and the stolen devices. Um, and what accountability measures other districts are putting into place without being overly punitive, but holding our students accountable. And, um, and then thirdly, just, um, I'll be interested to learn a little bit more, um, when we have that presentation about how our students are learning to take care of their devices. Um, the sort of, um, digital literacy that they're gaining around that and being accountable for, uh, digital safety and that kind of thing. Um, so. Oh, we're, there's an echo. All right.
I, I think I'd like to know who's responsible for that literacy at each school or each site, whatever. Sorry.
No, no apologies needed. Um, that's all. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
More thanks and appreciation, um, for you and your team. I won't, I'll try to keep it brief. Um, I too really liked hearing about the student internships and not only the unpaid opportunities, but during the school year. I think the more we can have students helping support all the different systems within DPS, the more stories we can also have about come back and work for our school system. I know we've got some DPS grads who are also working in IT, like how can we get more folks and students in that system? I think, like, how can we expand that? And how can your department also support other departments in doing some of similar work? I think it's a way of, again, of building capacity without adding additional positions all the time. Um, I too am concerned financially about us keeping up with the one-to-one. I, um, wonder if we need to also consider, do we need to be one-to-one for everyone? Are we one-to-one for third grade and up? Are we, I don't, I don't know, just proposing things, but considering what's the right way to go about it? Because I am worried about the financial commitment. Um, and want to, want us to consider it, what's the right rotation? And I think too, along with what, um, other folks said, teaching students how to use devices, I think it's almost taken for granted now that of course you know how to use a computer and you know how to use a phone, like, yeah, of course. But I think our students, um, could use some skills in how to use, how to have a device, use it responsibly. I think as we think about gaggle too, and in privacy, the, the knowledge of students, this device is a DPS device. And whatever you do here could be monitored, like some of that really explicit instruction around. around digital literacy, I think is important and that probably taps into some other departments too, but and then taking care of your device as well. Um, all right, that's that part. The second part is, and I'm sure y'all consider this as you think about future refresh with bright links, like is that the right projector system that we want to use? I know some schools are using, uh, TVs at this point, like I've seen a lot of TVs in places instead of bright link projectors. I'm sure y'all was thinking about that, but a question that I would also consider. Um, and last but not least, and then feel free to respond to any of that. I'm also worried about tech champions and their roles. And I wonder if, I know the conversation is based on ADM, but should there also be more based on your ADM? Like you get more tech champions because you're in a high school with thousands of students versus just more money? And is there ways as we build out the student internship program, that some of those student interns are at a high school on a regular basis to help support some of that work? Um, because I think, and I talked about this, we did this originally in 2020, going one-to-one is great, but the support system and network to sustain one-to-one is a whole different ballgame, but we have to be prepared for what that looks like.
Thank you so much, Chairman Sid. I took a lot of notes. Um, I do, one piece I do want to respond to know that the others will definitely make sure that we're, um, noting all of the comments from other board members as well. The interactive classroom displays, and I probably didn't say that, as we're thinking about bright links, there are multiple systems um, that, um, we are considering and we want to make sure that that classroom environment um, is conducive for the learning for all of our learners. And so we are really considering and working closely, not only with IT, but other departments as well, because we have learners that learn in multiple different ways and we want to make sure that any of the interactivity that we're able to bring to a classroom is meeting the needs of our learners. So that is something that we're exploring, also being cognizant of financial implications as well as sustainability, which is a place where with bright links, there was not a sustainability plan. So as we're thinking about all of the components of technology, we're also trying to make sure that we're thinking about what sustainability looks like in those funding sources.
Um, I would just say bright links are not the way of the future.
All right.
Um, but again, just to echo with what, you know, with what Dr. Hardy said, um, again, I'm very excited about the partnership with the students and CTE that we've started to work on. It's very exciting when we have, um, seniors to graduate. Um, we have one student that interned with us last summer. He's at Penn State right now. Um, he wanted in cybersecurity, um, he reached out to me about an internship and you know, it's all about building connections with our students. And so I work with him and he's currently pursuing um, an internship with another organization that can really give him some really good cybersecurity experience. Um, and again, you know, I told him, you can always swing by here and check on us. But again, those type of opportunities to be on your resume in college are priceless.
Absolutely. And again, I think our work, so much this igniting limitless potential, right? Our vision is about exposing students to different types of opportunities. And I really think letting them know this is something that you could do as a career. Sometimes it just requires certification, sometimes a four-year degree, all of which can make some good money, um, I think is really important. So thank you to Ms. Malone and the whole team. Thank y'all for hanging with us tonight. I appreciate that. Uh, and if you ever want to come back, the door is always open. You can come back to another board meeting or you can stream us online, but thank y'all for being here.
Yes.
All right. Y'all, y'all have such good questions that I thought of a couple of other things and I'm sorry to hold y'all any longer. I didn't hear you talk about hotspots at all. And I assume that we are still doing that, but we still also don't have money for it, particularly after this S R money, uh, runs out. Can you talk to that? Cause I know the county was supposed to be working on it and does, I don't think they've made much progress.
Yep. Great question. Um, so again, we are still, um, assigning hotspots to students as needed. Um, along with kind of how the Chromebook certification process works. Monthly, we are taking a inventory of our hotspots. We're working with our vendor. So again, we have, um, our asset manager, we get that monthly report from AT&T. We're reaching out to principals and tech champions. If we see hotspots that have above normal usage. Um, also on our hotspots, we have filtering on them. So again, we're trying to make sure that our students aren't going to inappropriate sites and things like that on them, but we are still in a good place with hotspots. We have hotspots available in our warehouse. So if students do need hotspots, they can submit a request and we can provide them one.
Thank you. And Mr. Lesor, give us some idea of what the state actually provides for technology and yeah, and people, how about that since we, yeah?
Unfortunately, not much. Um, they only give out $10 million. Basically we get about 200 and some odd thousand dollars annually, and then we get, uh, some additional, um, deposits into our accounts for interest, but it's very minimal compared to the needs. I'll, I'll go back to, um, there's 15 million dollars sitting on a table for for the purpose of, uh, fines and forfeitures that the state's holding 750 million dollars worth, maybe 15 million dollars for us. Would put us in a good place to continue our IT services. Uh, for technology purposes, as far as staffing goes, they will, they don't provide us dollars specifically for technology. Uh, we use our, um, what we call non-certified funding in our PRC O three for those non-certified staff. Uh, as part of, uh, the funding, they see that as infrastructure, uh, cost and operation costs, which they did not provide us a lot of money for, for the purpose of these much-needed, uh, positions.
I think that's some room for us to continue to advocate at the state level because I'm sure that rural districts are very much struggling with, with this. Um, and the, the last thing I just wanted to comment upon about phishing and I understand why you all have to do that. And I want us, as you all continue, I know y'all lead best practices in the state. I want us to make sure we do it with kindness and not a gotcha feeling. Um, because I think uh, it's also important, not just how we communicate with folks behind the screen and through their email, but like, what are we doing to train folks if they got, you know, like, what are we doing to have an in-person conversation or a proactive training? And you talked about, you're going to do some more of that, like nobody wants to do anything to jeopardize DPS IT infrastructure, but, um, just the way that we do that, I think can, can go a long way, um, in how we communicate that we care about our people and we're not trying to, and you know, trick them. Um, and I know cyber threats are one thing and it's kind of almost like the fire marshal and his things thinking about um, fire safety is the only thing, like when we look at the lens of what we're asking people mostly to do, it's teach children and these are tools that, that they're using for that. And some of them are better at tech than others and some of them are not. So, um, I don't know, I just, um, I know y'all will continue to, to lead that with, with kindness and grace in your hearts for our people that are still learning a lot of this and weren't raised with it, but thank y'all.
I have one more thing and that's it. I promise. Then y'all go home. Um, I have heard concerns around the beginning of the school year that folks don't have devices on day one. And I know y'all have a plan for deployment. I wonder if we can have some better just communication between your team and school so that if I'm a teacher and I plan for my kids to be on it canvas day one, that like, I don't plan that way, knowing that the devices might not come on that day. But I know that's caused some frustration at some schools around the beginning of the school year because they didn't have everything for every student on the first day.
Thank you so much for that feedback.
Ms. Hamstead, Chair Hamstead, is that a year-round concern also? Like, do we need to, as we expand year-round, be extra concerning about being ready in July? Like it's a whole thing, isn't it?
It's almost like you have three different deployments, right? Uh, year-round schools, specialty schools and normal schools, which keeps y'all busy, busy over the school year. Um, but yeah, I think communication will be helpful to make sure that people don't, again, plan for, and then kids feel like they're behind because they didn't have their device on that right there.
Correct. Yep. And I would just add kind of like in that full transparency. So this past summer, you know, we are having to sanitize devices. We're also working to make sure we accommodate devices with summer learning. And so again, we, we had lessons learned and we'll definitely be applying those for this upcoming school year.
I think. We need a motion?
Yeah, we do. I'm sorry.
They want to go shopping, I can tell. Uh, is there a modification? Y'all were talking, was it about this or something else? I'm sorry, was.
I was just confirming that the, these purchases were already bid in accordance with whatever statutes would govern such a purchase. Um, and Mr. Lesor, um, has assured me that, that whatever bidding was required did occur. So that was my question. Sorry. I didn't know you could hear us.
So, so with that, I would move approval of the Durham Public Schools Information Technology Update Plan. Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Valladolid. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please use the same sign. Passes unanimously. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Malone. You all are dismissed. Hopefully you're going to have some donut for them tomorrow morning.
All right. Thank you all again for being here. We appreciate all your hard work. Um, we're not, the next time our dinner is our closed session, we'll take a motion.
A move that we go into closed session for the reasons stated on the agenda.
Second. Go ahead.
It's been moved by Ms. Valladolid, seconded by Ms. Chavez. Any other discussion? All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please use the same sign. Passes unanimously. We're now in closed session.
Madam Chair, I'm here to seek your approval for the personnel report as discussed at the closed session.
This is approval of the personnel report dated February twenty third, twenty twenty three as amended.
Second. It's a move by Ms. Byer, seconded by Ms. Travis. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please use the same sign. It passes unanimously? Unanimously. We are adjourned.